Is there a possibility in the future that we can put the page number like at the end? Because sometimes I feel like it's scrolling, scrolling, scrolling.
Oh, and like when it would, where the...
Yeah, see, prove me the page.
Oh, yeah, you go to the, you actually go to the other one, which is the HTML.
Oh, okay. Madam Mayor, ready for countdown? I'll count it. Counting down, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, and one.
Welcome to the Brisbane City Council meeting of October 19th, 2023. I'm calling this meeting to order at 7:31 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Here.
Councilmember Lance.
Here.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
And Mayor Davis.
Here. City Attorney, can I have a report out from closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The City Council met in closed session this evening to take up two claims as for the agenda. Both were approved as recommended by the insurance company, insurer. Thank you.
Excellent. Can I get a first and a second to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote. Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lance.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye. We'll move on to oral communications, number one. Is there a member of the public wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda? Oh, I believe I do actually have a slip here. Matthew Beeston?
Yes.
Come on up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Matthew Beeston. Trying to get this adjusted here. I am an organizer with Carpenters, NorCal Carpenters Union, out of San Mateo County, Local 217. I am here to talk to you all about labor standards. Now, I'm sure that y'all have heard this before, but we like to remain present in your community, as it is our community as well. We summarize labor standards as, with four major points, right? So apprenticeship, healthcare, prevailing wage, and local hire. So apprenticeship, providing lifelong skills to members of your community, right? So they can build a career, they can build a family, they can build a life. Healthcare, without healthcare provided by an employer, right? That can provide, that can, you know, intensify stress on public healthcare. It can also become a burden on the taxpayers, right? So if we implement that, that can be something that can be relieved from your community. Prevailing wage, of course, that is going to stimulate local economy, right? So if we have workers that are making a fair wage so that they can put that money back into the community, that's good for everyone, all business owners present here. So that wage is very important. And then, of course, local hire, right? That brings it home. That brings it so that we know the people in this community are the ones who are going to be getting that work, and they're going to be putting back to this community. So whether or not you have recognized the importance of implementing labor standards in the past, right? I just ask you to please be aware of what I'm asking, consider what we're proposing. You all have the ability to change people's lives, right? And I am myself a example of that, being a part of the Carpenters Union now for 10 years. I feel representative now. It has changed my life. So thank you for your time. Thank you for listening to me. And the representatives at Carpenters Local 217 would love to talk to any of you, all of you, more about labor standards in your community.
Thank you, Matthew.
Yeah, thank you, Matthew, for coming.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda? Okay. City Clerk, anyone virtually?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we will move on to the consent calendar. Can I get a first and a second to approve consent calendar items B through D?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote. Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Lance.
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Davis.
Aye. We'll now move on to old business, item E, information report concerning development impact fees. Staff report?
I think Michael Roush, has he joined us?
Yes.
There he is, okay.
Yeah, there I am. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Michael Roush, legal counsel for the city of Brisbane. Last month, we presented to the City Council an information report concerning development impact fees. And that report discussed a number of issues such as the legal authority of the city to impose the development impact fees, explained that certain elements had to be met in order to establish those fees, such as the need for the fee, the benefit, and the proportionality of it. We also indicated to the council that the development impact fees were typically imposed in order that new development pay its fair share and not have that continuing obligation fall on existing residents and taxpayers. The council agreed with that and asked us to bring back a further report concerning where the city stands with respect to the various studies that are being done on these development impact fees. And so the report we provided you in the agenda materials provides as follows. There is a development impact fee study that's been completed for the parkland, park and recreation facilities, open space, and trails. That has been completed and will be presented to the City Council when the other studies for the DIFs are completed. Those development impact fee studies include one for affordable housing. And again, that nexus study has been completed and will be presented to the City Council in conjunction with the other development impact fees. At tonight's meeting, the council adopted the traffic demand management ordinance that will provide a framework for traffic development impact fees. And that study will be undertaken later this year. And when that study is completed, we will also present development impact fees for traffic. And finally, there was council consensus at the meeting in September that the city should look at a development impact fee for certain capital facilities such as renovations, city hall, a new fire station, et cetera. And accordingly, as with this, as with the traffic development impact fee, we will undertake a nexus study for this particular DIF, which will again occur later this year or early next. And staff is developing a potential list of facilities that would be included in that study. Once all those studies have been completed, we will then return to the council with the outcome of those, indicate what those fees could be, and then council will have the opportunity to decide whether it wants to adopt those fees and to the extent if they want to, you know, reduce those fees in order for the fees to be competitive with other communities, that would be within council's discretion. That concludes my report. I'd be glad to answer any follow-up questions concerning development impact.
Thanks. Councilmember Lance?
I think at this time I'm good. Seems pretty clear.
Okay, Councilmember Mackin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Roush, on our staff report, it talks about DIFs to be presented to the council. First one says DIF for parkland, park and rec facilities, open space, and trails. Would you please define for us what you mean by parkland? Is it development of parkland? Is it acquisition of parkland?
It is both, actually. Well, I should say it's the acquisition of parkland, and then the component that says park and recreation facilities encompasses the development of the park to provide the infrastructure and things of that nature. But the parkland itself is simply for the acquisition of the land.
Okay. And another question I have, it also says in this report, "DIF may not be used for routine maintenance." Based on some correspondence and people who've asked me questions, could you please elaborate and clarify that? Some people seem to be under the impression that impact fees are ongoing and they will be used to further the upkeep of our facilities on an annual basis.
Development impact fees cannot be used for the routine maintenance of any of the facilities that the city owns and operates and maintains. That has to come out of the general fund. The development impact fees can be used to do substantial renovation of existing facilities, but it does not, they cannot be used for the routine maintenance of those facilities. That has to come out of the general fund.
So this is, this is not a fee that is going to be used from existing, to levy against existing businesses to help preserve the different city structures that we have?
Correct. It would be imposed only on a property owner who comes in and develops. Now, development could also include, you know, major renovations of existing facilities, but it is not an ongoing fee that is imposed on residents or businesses, much like a, say, a business license tax might be.
And so just to clarify then, it begs the question. So if someone is looking for revenues to support maintaining existing facilities, would that come under perhaps the nature of business taxes?
Correct. Those are the kinds of revenues that the city has. Business license taxes, transit occupancy taxes, sales taxes that we get. Those are the kinds of things that go into the general fund and that are used for programs, services, salaries, et cetera.
So the impact fees are a one-shot deal. Here's the development, here's the fee you're going to pay. Once the fee's paid, they're done. They never have to pay that fee again.
That is correct. Presumably, the business that comes in will start generating other kinds of revenue for the city, but in terms of a development impact fee, it is paid generally in connection with the building permit or in connection with development itself. It's a one-time expenditure that the property owner pays.
Good. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Cunningham?
I have no questions at this time.
Councilmember O'Connell?
My only question for staff would be, if we were to pass some sort of development impact fee, that would be in addition to whatever negotiation in a development agreement there would be?
That is correct. Typically, you would have a development agreement. There would be fees that would be imposed that might be in addition to the typical kind of development impact fees that would otherwise be paid. Those kinds of things that would be negotiated and set forth in a development agreement in terms of what the property owner would pay for that project.
Great. Thank you very much.
We had some comments from the public that were emailed to us, so I just want to ask about some specific things that were mentioned. Could we use the funds to maintain a secure fire break?
It would seem to me that that probably falls under the umbrella of more of a maintenance. Certainly, if there were, I know I have seen development impact fees paid or used to purchase, for example, if you, if the fire department needed a particular piece of equipment to fight fires in a wildland or a mountainous area, I have seen development impact fees used for that purpose. But I don't think it could be used just for your typical kind of fire break in a, you know, outside of some kind of capital facility to actually access a fire break, which can't really imagine what that would be.
What if we wanted to use the funds?
I was going to say, if we bought, if we bought-
You got to get closer to the thing.
Okay, sorry. If we bought land for the purposes of a fire break, I think we could probably do that.
I would agree with that.
Acquisition, land acquisition. What about, like, we have had, we have spent money to remove ivy from canyons or, you know, mitigate other invasive species. Could we use the money for that?
I don't think, I don't think development impact fees would be, that would not be a proper use of development impact.
Okay. I think that's all the questions that I have. Does anyone else have any questions before I open it up for public comment? Okay. So I will open it up for public comment at this time. I do want to remind the public that we're actually just receiving an update from staff about where staff is at in the process with getting all the information for the four proposed development impact fees. We're not making a decision on this item tonight. It's just an update. So with that, if you would like to speak at this time? Anyone? Okay. You have three minutes?
I had questions. You defined parkland, but does that mean that if we buy, if we bought parkland with money that was from development fees, would we then have to build facilities on it and treat it as a park? Or could we buy habitat? And then also, I would like to know what the definition of open space is in regard to the development impact fees, because a parking lot's open space. So there's a real big difference in my mind between open space and habitat. And if you did use it to buy a piece of land that was a fire break, would you be obligated to clear that land and maintain it as a fire break ongoing after the time you purchased it? So I guess I'm really concerned about some of the obligations that come along with these development impact fees. And personally, one of the things that I feel is a little bit edgy about development impact fees is it's held out by the developer sort of as candy to sweeten the pot and get people to go along with accepting larger developments than what we have to. And, and it's a one-time, here, have all this sweet candy, have all this money to build, you know, fancy parks and do stuff. But then there's no maintenance, and we get addicted to the candy, but there's no, no more candy coming down the pike. And in the meanwhile, we're expected to build these things and use our other money from the general fund to take care of them. But that's not an endless supply either. I mean, I asked the other night about, during one of our Dark Sky Subcommittee meetings, about putting shielding on the acorn lights on the main street. And I was told, no, no, we don't have enough money to do that. That would be like, there's like 300 acorn lights in Brisbane at, you know, $250 a light plus installation. That would be like $150,000, and we don't have that kind of money. And so we're going to let it wait 15 years until they all wear out. But to me, that didn't make any sense because it's, I'll be probably dead by then. But in the meanwhile, you know, the lights on Visitation Avenue, while pretty, illuminate everything. And I can see seven of them from my bedroom at night. And every time I sit up at the middle of the night, there's one blaring at me. And Madison, you yourself have experienced that. And so, you know, where does that fit into, you know, development impact fee? No, it's not covered by that. That has to come out of general maintenance or something else, or I could go door-to-door and fundraise for it. But I think that taking development impact fees or counting on development impact fees without proper financial planning in the long term is a very slippery slope, and it seduces us into accepting a lot more development just for the kudos of being able to get all that money and make a park or do whatever, that you then can't maintain. And we already have a park at the Marina that was built, when the Marina was built, and opened when the Marina opened, and it has not been maintained. And the level of that park has sunk at least six to eight feet in the intervening years and is now, you know, swampy and the trees are dying because of salt. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm over my time. But you get the picture. So we really need to think about the long-term maintenance of this candy money that's being held out by developers. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Michael, would you be able to respond to whether the money could be used for habitat and what we would consider open space within that fee?
Sure. I don't have the actual study in front of me right at the moment, but I think it's fair to say that the definition of open space as used in the study would not include a parking lot. But certainly, to the extent that there is habitat as part of open space, then certainly the fees could be used for that purpose. You know, clearly, it has open space and trails, and sort of by definition, certain amount of open space is going to be habitat that the city wants to conserve. And so therefore, the funds could be used to acquire a property, say, up in the Brisbane Acres or elsewhere, that could be used for habitat. And it is true that if the city purchased it, purchased property, then along with that does go the obligation to maintain it. But again, if the goal is to try to preserve area that we consider to be viable habitat, then those fees could be used for that purpose.
They could be used for that purpose? Yes, they could be used for that purpose.
Both?
Well, buy it and maintain it. Well, wouldn't that be considered maintenance? We can maintain it? Yeah.
Well, I'm saying that once you, if the city uses the park, the park fees to purchase what would be considered open space/habitat, then along with that goes the obligation to maintain it, and that, I think, would have to come out of a different fund.
Okay, that would be general fund, maintenance.
Yes, yes.
But, but, but Michael, if it wasn't a routine maintenance effort, you know, I know that in the past, we've talked about using the funds for, say, the kitchen at the Mission Blue Center or the roof at the community center. Is, in the end, it's the city making the nexus for justifying using the funds, correct?
That's, that's right. I mean, I think you have to look, I mean, obviously, on the spectrum of what considers maintenance versus renovation of capital improvements, there's a, you know, there's a line, and at some point, you have to decide which is which. But council has discretion to make that kind of determination, as long as you're not being arbitrary and capricious, you know, council's discretion is going to prevail.
All right, thank you.
So wouldn't it be better to have the discussion once we get the full studies and know what the wording is and what the study says before we try to go into all the ifs, ands, or maybes about what could go into any of these particular DIFs?
I mean, I would say so. This item is just an update from staff.
Right.
We're not actually, you know-
Thank you. I think we're just sort of getting into the weeds on it tonight.
Well, I think I, you know, the public has brought up a lot of interesting, you know, questions, and they're here tonight. So I want to be respectful of those inquiries, and also they, the answers to those questions will inform us at the next meeting. Given that, I'll go ahead and bring it back to public comment. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Anyone virtually?
Madam Mayor, you still have one question that was asked by Michelle Salmon that wasn't answered?
Oh.
Which was, could we purchase land for a fire break and then develop it?
Maintain it, if that's the purpose.
Sorry.
Correct. You could use it, you could, if the purpose of the, if the reason for the purchase was for create a fire break as part of the open space, the answer is yes. I suppose if there were certain capital improvements that needed to be made to the property in order to make it be an effective fire break, the answer there would be yes. But the sort of year in, year out, you know, chopping the weeds, et cetera, that would be more as maintenance rather than a capital improvement.
Anyone else for public comment?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Let's just, can we, is it a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Question, question is, I, I think a lot of this has come from information that people have received making promises about these development impact fees. And I'd like to hear from staff about how long it's going to be before we know how long, how long is it going to be before this is really distilled? So that little rumor mill that's saying we can spend money on this, that, and the other can just quieten down for a bit until we've got the final answers.
I think we're supposed to look at all of the information from all of the different studies the first quarter of next year.
Yeah, Q1 of '24.
Thank you.
Okay. Staff still, staff still supports that timeline, yes.
Yeah, I think we're, that would be coming back to you with a, you know, with the reports and discussion of the feasibility study. And then I suspect there'll be probably a couple of meetings that would be involved with that before we would distill down to an actual set of fees or in a process for that. And we'll try to answer, I totally agree with Councilwoman O'Connell. There are so many theoreticals here that we got to be careful that we're not trying to answer all those at this point in time. So we'll, we'll try to come up with some various scenarios, because I think the overarching concern, as I see it, is, you know, buying something or building something and then maintaining it. So I think that's, we're going to try to, we'll try to put something together that kind of gives everybody a good sense of that.
Yes.
And then, you know, we can kind of go from there, or a better sense of that.
And for the public's information, we're considering not only a development impact fee for parkland, park and recreation facilities, open space, and trails, that's just one. The other one is for affordable housing. We have one for traffic demand management and for capital facilities. So there are several. We will contemplate when the information is provided to make sure that there's the right balance between what is a, you know, what we can implement and what's truly feasible from a developer's perspective. Okay, anyone else? Okay?
I'm sorry, that really, really raised another question for me. So once you approve the implementation of development impact fees, should you decide to do that, then what's the next step? You grant developers more developments so that they, so that you collect the development impact fees? Do you have people waiting in the wings to pay us development impact fees to get what they want? I'm concerned about that because we do have on the books, you know, 1.4 million square foot freight forwarding facility in the quarry as a development that, you know, is really going to have a huge impact on life in Brisbane with 24/7 truck traffic and, you know, 24-hour illumination, et cetera. And that is a prime candidate for giving us development impact fees. And I would not, I wouldn't approve that, no matter how much they paid us, because it would ruin the quality of life for everybody who lives at the ridge and everybody who lives in Brisbane. So I guess my question is, you know, who's waiting in the wings to pay us off? And is, and so that's a different timeline than you guys getting the information on the studies and from the, from the city. But then what happens? What's the next step? And why are these promises being made so far in advance? Is there people waiting in the wings to pay us off to build like, you know, giant buildings out at Sierra Point and everything else? And they're just, they're just waiting for this so that, you know, what's the deal? And I think that's what people really want to know, is what are our options? Yeah, if they're going to build stuff that we can't stop them from building, then we should get all the money that we can to mitigate that. But if it's tit for tat and they're paying us off to be able to build more than what we would normally accept, I don't think that's really, really a great idea, just to get another park when we don't take care of the ones we have yet.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to make a public comment at this time? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I see no hand series, but I do want to note for the record, Lisa Greenlee and Frank Kern provided written correspondence concerning the support of the implementation of the parkland, park and recreation facilities, open space, and trails fee, and also Michelle Salmon regarding parkland usage fee. Open Space and Trails fee, and also Michelle Salmon regarding Parkland usage fee.
Okay. I believe Lisa Greenlee sent something.
We had another correspondence from Lisa Greenlee also, I believe. I think that went through you.
Yeah, I mentioned, I mentioned that Lisa Greenlee and Frank Kern, sorry.
Okay, got it. That brings us to council discussion. Really not much to discuss. What's staff looking for, looking for from us?
This was just a update from the city attorney's office and so we'll move on to the next step.
Okay, so we can move on then to item F, short-term rental program implementation. And do I have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. On October 5th, your last meeting, you had an item before you to authorize a one-year extension of the city's current contract with Granicus to provide short-term rental or short, or STR monitoring and permitting services. The matter was held over to tonight's meeting and number, number of issues were raised regarding city procedures for collecting transient occupancy tax or TOT from such rentals. And there's some other procedural questions that were raised, so we held over the whole item. None of the issues that were raised are directly relevant to the contract. The contract scope doesn't really get into the issues that were raised, but we held the whole thing over for once. One discussion this evening. So again, we are still recommending the one-year extension of the current agreement for a fee of $11,430 for one year of service. That is still our recommendation at the present time. The other issue is related to, one question was how TOT is collected from short-term rentals? And what are the implications if if such operators fail to pay the year TOT as required? Under the current procedures, they have required to remit their TOT quarterly and they have 30 days from the deadline to actually make the payment. So if the dead, the quarter ends on September 30th, they have until October 30th to make payment. If they don't, then they're considered, then they're late. So they can make the payment either directly to the city or through Granicus itself. And then the, all the permit holders do receive a reminder from Granicus about the quarterly payment being due. So that's kind of the current procedure. We originally envisioned that the annual permits, renewal process, because these permits are only good for one year, that when someone filed for renewal, we would verify that they had been timely in their payment at the end of the year. So that was kind of our original thought process. You know, it's been brought up that that doesn't ensure timely payment on a quarterly basis. Because we weren't really in the, equipped to quarterly verify those payments. But we understand that that is a, a concern and I think the city manager has authorized staffing to ensure the timely quarterly payments are made and verified. And Clay, Clay can discuss that a little more if he wishes to. The other question was related to any penalties for late payment. And again, under BMC Section 3.24.080 sets a 10% payment for delinquent payments already. So there's already a 10% fee or fine if they're more, if they're delinquent. And another 10% if they're delinquent by more than 30 days. So that's the current structure of the ordinance today. And then there's another provision that you can charge a 25% penalty if it's determined that non-payment is a result of fraud. So these are all currently built into the ordinance today, so. Lastly, I think the other question that came up, well, then the other issue obviously is if someone fails to make their payment, that would be grounds for revocation of their short-term rental permit. So, so there's financial penalties and there's potentially a loss of a revocation of a, of a use permit or a short-term rental permit. So we believe those are compelling reasons for people to comply with the ordinance, so. But if the council wishes to have staff explore more severe penalties, that's at your discretion as well this evening, so. The other question was, arose about the fact that stays, there are a number of stays on these platforms that are more than 30 days. So they're not subject to the short-term rental provisions or the payment of TOT. There are provisions in the municipal code that do allow for a daily business license tax on hotels and other places designated for occupancy by transients that could conceivably apply to rental stays more than 30 days. If the council's interested in pursuing that, city attorney would need to research that further. But again, that's an option for the council this evening as well. Last question that came up was just to clarify the number of permits that have been issued and are active. So far, since the program was, took effect and the ordinance took effect, five short-term rental permits have been issued. One expired after the year and the, and the permit holder did not renew it. So there are four active permits. In the last quarter, two of those active permits did not report any stays generating income. So of the four, two were reporting income gained in the last quarter. So that's a little bit of information for you as well. With that, we're recommending the council authorize a city manager to execute the one-year extension with Granicus. So that would be one recommendation and then two would be to provide whatever direction the council wishes in regard to the penalties for failure to remit TOT. And then three, you can provide direction to city staff to explore the feasibility of collecting rentals or revenues on rental stays exceeding 30 days in length and advertise on short-term rental platforms. Again, two or three are, you know, totally up to the council's discretion. That would conclude my comments.
I have some questions. So I'd like to like get a more of a sense of Granicus, their like role in the process, so. Do they audit? So if somebody says, we have four active permit holders and two of them report no stays. Is this just on an honor system or is Granicus somehow able to audit? Or even those that did report, how do we know that their reportings are accurate?
Admittedly, it's an imperfect system because what, what shows up are stays that are advertised. Right, they, they just troll through these various platforms and you can determine what was advertised, so. That's easy to call out, what is it, 30-day plus stay or less than 30-day stay? So that's sort of easy to do through Granicus. What's more difficult is to verify, you know, someone may have advertised nights available, nights. They, they can look at nights booked and you can make some projections as to earnings and, and potential tax due from those, that data. They can also use, they also use reviews of stays as sort of verification that stays were made. So those are the kind of the tools they use, but you're not getting data from an Airbnb. You're not getting data from VRBO to actually get a precise accounting. They have an algorithm where they estimate what they feel the range of, of revenue would be based on the activity of a particular site. But if the city, and there's an audit procedure built into the ordinance where we can request an audit and provide, make the operator provide data. I think it would be a challenge to get an independent verification of that data in any case, though. So it is a challenging to really pin it down to the penny and the night, you know, the, the number of stays. But there are procedures to at least get us in the, the range of what we consider reasonable and that the payments align with what the record of activity on the, on the platform shows.
So is Granicus the one interfacing with the hosts to say your tax is late?
They only send a quarterly, they send a reminder, but part of their contract is not to enforce the ordinance. That is up to city staff. So what Clay's been talking about is having one of his staff members basically verify what payments have been made on a quarterly basis. And if, if there's evidence or we believe that the payments are not, have not been made in timely way or there's some discrepancy, it would be up to the city to follow through with those individual permit holders.
So it seems like the, the consequence for failure to remit TOT is grounds for suspension, revocation, and or non-renewal. But that still doesn't take care of the balance. So how do we ensure as a city, like you have the 10% penalty and then the 25% penalty and so on and so forth? But what teeth do we have to like actually collect? Do we, can we put like a lien on the property, like how, what's, what's the deal?
I would defer to the city attorney or legal counsel on that question.
It would be considered a debt and we would have to pursue that most likely through a small claims court unless the amount got into the several thousand dollar range, in which case we can file a civil action. But it would not be, it's not set up as a lien against the property. It would be basically a civil debt.
And also, we wouldn't have really an idea of how much we are taking someone to court for.
We would have to, correct, we would have to do, have some kind of audit where we would conclude that the amount of fees paid was not what is really due. We would then send the permit holder, you know, a bill for that. And if that wasn't paid, then our remedy would be to, to go to court, most likely small claims court, to recover that amount. Now, certainly, we would also be in a position to suspend or revoke the permit based on that not providing the information correctly in terms of the, of the TOT. But in terms of collecting the money, they would have to be done through a civil action if the permit holder wasn't going to cooperate in a timely way.
To me personally, it would seem in our best interest, just as you would do with other taxes, to require the taxpayer to indicate like how many, what the overall revenue was, how many nights were stayed, so on and so forth. Always as part of the process in which they pay. So they can demonstrate how they arrived at their number and that can hold them more accountable in the future, should we have concerns that that number is inaccurate. Okay, I'll open it up for council questions.
Yes, I may. On the Granicus request, it shows a pricing summary of page two of six, which is page 85 of our packet. And on this, it shows address identification, 62 rental units, listings, compliance monitoring, 43 rental units, rental activity monitoring, 43 rental units. We don't have anywhere near that amount. Is that their lowest amount that's in their contract?
What they do is they, they call multiple platforms and they also have, they have to basically screen out which ones are subject to our ordinance requirements. So they may need to look at more than are actually subject to the ordinance. For example, you may have a number that are 30-day plus rentals. You may have others that come and go intermittently. So the numbers are based kind of on the, as I understand it, based on their activity, what they're typically monitoring on a regular basis, based on the two years of we've been involved with, contract with them.
Okay, I just don't understand why, if we only have five businesses registered and granted, we may have double that that have not applied for a permit, why we would be 62 rental listings?
Well, there's also the ones that are time of stay and there are a number that are 30-day plus. And then you have multiple listings on multiple platforms. You could have the same listing on four different platforms potentially.
Okay.
It's, it's a little bit of, yeah, it's, it's challenging to keep.
Convoluted.
Understand, understand.
Councilmember Rakin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First question, John. As for the penalties, the 10% for delinquent, additional 10% if they're delinquent, then more than 30 days, is that compounded?
I'd have to check the ordinance. I believe it is, but I'm not sure.
Okay. And in looking at the cost of the service agreement, you listed costs for 2021, 2022, and upcoming 2024. There was nothing listed for 2023, so help me understand. When we look at 2021, was that really paying for 2022? Because there's, there's nothing listed for 2023.
I'm sorry, what do you, are you looking at the fiscal impact?
I'm on page 80, fiscal impact. So I've got 2021, $11,247. Then I've got 2022, $10,682.24. I don't have anything for 2023.
Well, the agreement that you have before you is be from December of 2023 to 2024. That's what you'd be authorizing the city manager to enter into. Right, so you, agreement cost of 2021, that was 21, 20, 2021 through 2022.
Okay.
2022 through 2023, 2023 through 2024.
Got it. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Sure.
Hang on a second. So on Granicus, where they talk about product descriptions, there's one here that's called rental activity monitoring. And it dovetails with what Madam Mayor brought up. It says ongoing monitoring of short-term rental listings for signs of rental activity, including historical revenue estimates and occupancies. And it says users can also compare historical revenue estimates to actual reported revenue to identify those that might be under-reporting and underpaying sales tax. Do we utilize that? And if not, shouldn't we utilize that? I understand that, that say last year, there, there wasn't much history to compare, but I'm not trying to, to surprise you with this, but it seems like something that somehow in-house, when they're seeing users, that we need to utilize that and we need to start using that.
It's, it's been done. I mean, again, the, the dollar amounts here to date have not raised an issue of discrepancy so far. Because yes, the Planner Robbins, who kind of administers this on a day-to-day basis, he does actually look at that issue of what their, what the historical estimates are using their algorithm and what the payments are. They're, again, it's not exactly a, always an apples-to-apples comparison. He's explained to me, there, there are some anomalies that, that would suggest that some of the historical projections from Granicus may be a little high. Again, that's his gut reaction from looking at some of the data. But we haven't run into a huge discrepancy where we felt the need to audit someone or make them provide evidence to account for that.
Got it. Also, there's, there's a note in here back again to where we previously talked about penalties on page 80 in that second paragraph, and it says, failure to collect and remit TOT timely are also grounds for suspension. Have we conveyed that in our notices to remind our permit holders that the TOT is due? Do we at this time specify a deadline that if you do not pay by so many days, your permit is suspended automatically?
The language in the ordinance, I believe, specifies the, the payment schedule. Whether the reminder letter, I'd have to see what Granicus sends out as a reminder letter if it, I, I know it gives the the deadline, but I don't know necessarily sets forth what the penalties or implications are if they failed to pay in a timely way.
Okay, and, and I'm asking because if, when we're talking about a 10% penalty on delinquent payments and then more than 30 days, we're alluding to be, people could be going 90 days. And if we have a mechanism for suspension, I think we need to start looking at that. So that's my rhetorical comment. Let me see if I had one more. Does Granicus at all monitor, when they, they talk about the listings they monitor, there's often, if you look at a lot of different sites and they'll say 30-day minimum. Do they still monitor some of those same listings and you may not know?
No, they do because they're, they'll look to make sure that they're not availabilities of less than 30 days within that window.
That's what I'm getting at. Okay, so they're aware someone may switch that up at the last minute. Okay. That's all my questions. Thank you.
I have one follow-up question. I'm aware that there is one permit holder that did not pay their last quarter TOT tax on time? T O T tax on time. Has that permit holder paid at this point? Because I know we're now into the next quarter.
No, they have not paid.
So why would it say that there's no enforcement activities on our staff report?
Enforcement being illegal, short-term rentals. Short-term rentals operating without a permit, we weren't looking at, um, neither code compliance nor planning staff have been tracking timely payment of quarterly T O T. It's not something we've been doing. Obviously, this whole issue has brought that to light, and we will be tracking it from here on out, and that could be considered a violation. But for the purposes of this report, we were talking about S T Rs that had a permit or did not have a permit.
Because one would assume that our numbers of how much it costs us to do code enforcement, which, you know, granted, when we first did this, it was more to, um, keep the bad actors, um, at bay and, um, keep our town from have, being overrun with Airbnb, short-term rentals. Um, but, you know, we could be offsetting a lot of these costs if we were in fact getting T O T from these businesses in a reliable fashion. And they are businesses, and one would assume if they're not paying their T O T to us, then they're probably not reporting it on their income taxes or anything else. So, um, you know, I'm sure it's a slippery slope for some people.
Yes, Clay.
So.
But that's not what we're discussing tonight, so.
Good, just since the question came up, who, the individual that is, um, hasn't, is not current, um, staff has been in contact with them. Um, they have assured us they will be coming in. Um, and as John spoke earlier, um, we are going to put together some internal processes, uh, in, out of my office to, will be have a follow-up and also the fine, uh, or the penalty provisions. So we are going to be tightening up that, that process. So we are pursuing a payment, um, as, uh, as we sit here tonight.
So tonight, we're really just discussing this contract with Granicus, but maybe in a future meeting, you could report out on where staff stands um, once the, our protocol's been updated.
Sure.
Because if we need to update our ordinance in order to give us enough teeth, we should do that.
I mean, this whole program is fairly new, as we all know.
We're working it out.
So we'll, uh, we'll give you an update, um, you know, let's say, early in Q one, um, with regards to where we're at with, uh, with all this. And, uh, like I said, we are putting together some internal procedures to be more, um, to, to make sure that the permittees are being contacted when they're not in compliance, and they understand the consequences of not being in compliance.
Excellent. Councilmember Lance?
Yeah, thank you. So, um, so John, as it was just, you know, uh, pointed out, you know, we did the ordinance in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, you know, and we put forth that ordinance primarily because we were getting a lot of complaints from the community. And, um, so since, you know, adopting the ordinance and, and having Granicus, um, in this position, have the complaints gone down from the community?
That would be my, uh, understanding, because we were down to four complaints investigated and resolved in this year. You know, and before we were getting, I would say four times that amount easily in the earlier years.
Mm-hmm.
Sixteen to twenty.
Okay, so i- i- it seems like, like what we've implemented is, is, is working at least on that front to, um, you know, to, to put out notice, right, that, you know, you can't operate in a, you know, in, in an unfriendly manner and, and not respect the neighborhood. Okay, so, um, so right now, no fines have been collected for any unpaid, okay, and for any violations. Okay. But I, I'm glad to hear, Clay, that, you know, that you're going to be addressing that. And, you know, sometimes these things take time to, you know, to really understand, you know, the, you know, what's going on. And so thank you for doing that. So it says here that the average, um, T O T that has been collected per year is fifty-seven, fifty. Uh, that's about half of what Granicus is, uh, um, you know, bill would be. But it seems like, like what Granicus provides is more than just, you know, the ability for us to collect the fees. There's just, you know, just that overall monitoring that gives us a good handle of what's going on, uh, in this industry in our town. Okay, so, um, you know, we have a one-year contract, you know, before, so one-year extension. Are, are you proposing that, you know, we do this every year, or should this be something that maybe every three years?
For now, I would suggest annually, because there may be functions that when we come up with an e-permitting system, enterprise-wide, we may be able to take some of the permitting and move it to the city side and focus Granicus just on more of the monitoring. So we may be able to reduce that, that contract over time. And that may be, you know, maybe one more year we'll need to do that. But, so I wouldn't want to get into too long a term with them, because I think we will ultimately be able to reduce that cost.
Mm-hmm. Okay, good. No, that, that, that makes sense. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Cunningham.
So there were some comments made about canceling permits, which I disagree with, because that's not going to be the answer, no matter what, because people will just go underground or more underground than they already are. In June of twenty-three, I sent a report that I did based on an analysis from inside Airbnb. And that was for the entire twenty-twenty-two year, just for Airbnb alone. And what that showed was that we have nineteen people registered in Brisbane on Airbnb. But we have five permit holders. Most of them aren't paying their taxes. So, and, and I know what, what came back from staff was that most of those people were registered as thirty days or more. So effectively, they're gaming the system, and they're not renting for thirty days. So we need to tighten that up, and if we can do that with an audit, that would be great. I know San Francisco demanded an audit from Airbnb and got it. So I don't know whether Granicus can do that on their own or whether they can get that information how San Francisco did it. I know it started in a lawsuit. Um, but, you know, all of these people who have people coming into their, into Brisbane, if somebody falls down on their property, the first thing they're going to do is call nine-one-one and use our resources. The least they can do is pay their taxes to afford that. So I say we go with Granicus, but we beef up how they do things and how they report back to us. We've got nineteen on the books, which means fourteen of them are saying they're thirty-day or more rentals, which means they don't have to pay tax, and we know that's not true.
But that's a twenty-twenty-two report, right? It's not a twenty-twenty-
Twenty-two.
So things could be different in twenty-twenty-three. But yeah, I mean, it does demonstrate that there is activity.
A couple of the people who, uh, we know are in default list as thirty days, and we know that's not true.
Interesting. Okay. So I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Council discussion?
I'd make a motion to approve the contract with Granicus.
I would second that.
Councilmember Mackin has a comment.
Thank you. I just, I would, I would say that, um, I would like to see this topic come back to the council. And I would like the discussion coming back to the council be about what happens if people go beyond sixty days not paying the T O T? It is a tax. They are businesses, and in essence, what we're paying out to Granicus, we're almost subsidizing those businesses for them. Um, I think our mayor's comment about accounting, just handing over some money and saying, this is what I collected, is not satisfactory. I would really like to see some accounting on showing where that came from. And, um, the penalties need to be clearly stipulated on the, the statements or whatever gets sent out. And, um, I would also like, since Councilmember Cunningham brought it up, I would like the council to have a discussion about the potential of an ordinance, which four states have enacted, other cities are looking at it for what I will euphemistically call extended stay lodging, which could encompass either thirty to ninety days or thirty to a hundred and twenty days, because it's removing housing. And that is proliferating. You know, just from looking, I've looked online. I would like to see a discussion about that.
Would Granicus be able to, um, also look at stays that are of that nature? Or they only will do like stays less than thirty days?
Right now, what they do is they look at stays that are listed for more than thirty days to verify that based on the bookings, they are actually not booking less than thirty days. That's what they do.
But they couldn't like-
They're not, they're not tracking stays over thirty days. They're not-
But if we asked them to, would they not be able to do that? Like, if we wanted to create an ordinance that created a penal, you know, created a tax for, uh, extended stays, could our existing, uh, consultant provider, whatever, partner be able to also manage those kinds of things?
I assume they could. Obviously, it would come in, there'd be more
Yeah.
units to monitor. So it would come with a contract modification, but
Yes.
they can do it for stays less than thirty. I don't know why they couldn't do it for stays up to whatever the council wants to review or keep track of.
Okay.
And if I may just add, one of the reasons, I, I have been doing a lot of research on this. West Marin has sixty percent of their housing to short-term rentals right now. That's huge. It's displaced lots of people. And we are the Sausalito of the peninsula. Don't think it couldn't happen here. I, I think we need to seriously come to grips with this. So please, can we have that circle back to the council?
Okay, given that, is everyone amenable with the motion that's already on the floor? Yes? Well, we have to call it anyway, right? You seconded?
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Davis?
Aye. Okay. Moving on to item G, Bay Shore Boulevard Traffic Calming.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, good evening. Bay Shore Boulevard, one of our favorite topics. Uh, prior to the early nineteen-sixties, it was the major north-south route, if you wanted to be on the east side of the peninsula. Uh, then one-on-one was built, and then for a number of decades, one-on-one served its purpose well. And then I think probably starting twenty-five, thirty years ago, we go to a point where there was so much traffic on one-on-one that some of it was diverted. And then we had so much buildup in the southern part of San Francisco and the eastern part of Daly City, that we started getting a lot of through traffic, to the point now where it's not uncommon for us to see twenty thousand trips a day going through there. And unfortunately, some of those speeds are starting to pick up. Uh, and of course, along Bay Shore Boulevard, we're starting to have our own development, too. Certainly, the, the mobile home park is probably one of the biggest pieces of it. And there are some commercial retail alongside that, so it's created some concerns. So as we've talked about it over the years, I, I've been asked to look at different ways to slow it down. So tonight, there's two things we're going to talk about. One of them, I, I would describe as very preliminary and more a pie in the sky, and that would be the option of slowing traffic down by choking it down to one lane in each direction, both north and south. Uh, we've, in past years, we've had traffic studies that tells us we've got probably sixty to seventy percent of that traffic is through traffic. In other words, it doesn't have a, it doesn't have a beginning, it doesn't have an origin or a destination here. So it's just people using Bay Shore Boulevard to go north-south or south-north. And we think that by cutting it down, cutting down the capacity, after a few months, people will eventually decide that, hey, that, that's just going to be too slow if we do that, so they'll go back to U S one-on-one. Uh, we had that studied when we had a Safe Trek research done. It was an outfit out of Berkeley. They actually hired Ferr and Pierce to do the work. They looked at that plan, and I've attached that to this report, and I think the council was given the Safe Trek report in early twenty-twenty-three. And if you haven't, I'll, I'll make sure you get the full report, uh, to your inboxes. It looks at it, it, it agrees with some of the original assessments that I made on it. The hard part is it's expensive. If you're trying to make it so that it's safe for pedestrians and bicyclists, pedestrians typically mean sidewalks. And it's, it's the price of the concrete that really makes it expensive. Take, take it out of lane and shifting lanes around so there are chicanes and such in it, you know, forcing cars to, to move from left to right, uh, to stay within their lane, that, that forces you to slow down. But to make it safe, you've got to have that five-foot-wide, six-inch-high, uh, concrete to protect people. It, and of course, we are looking for grants to do that work. It's, but we just haven't been successful yet. And in the interim, I've been asked again, well, are there other things we could do to slow this down? So I put together a short draft of something that I think I would, would recommend to you. It's, it's a visual road narrowing. And let me cut to the end on that first, because when, because of the cutoff times when we have to get our staff reports in, I didn't have all the estimates in from contractors, so I put a pretty hefty buffer in here just in case the contractor felt that we were going to need some extensive traffic control to keep his crews out there safe. And now that I've got all the estimates in, what I've shown in here, we could get done for half of the dollar amount. So I think it's more of a twenty-five thousand dollar project to get done. But the concept of this, think of, think of the times when you've driven on a freeway that you know, and you're driving along probably in the number one lane. But then at one point in time, they have construction happening on the side of that road. So they put that K-rail and perhaps a piece of plywood right next to it, right? It's the same road that you've driven on for years. It's the same exact width, but having that barrier next to you makes you feel like, ew, I should slow down a little bit. It just gives you that sense that the road is narrower, even though it's not. So it's playing with your mind. And that's really what I'm proposing that we do here, that in three different locations on the southbound portion of Bay Shore, between, say, like where M and K Pipelines is now and to the other side of the mobile home park, we would put a set of delineators on the inside edge of the yellow line that's on the number one lane, the number one lane being the lane that's to your left, and also putting it on the inside edge of the white line on the number two lane, which is protecting the bicycle lane right now. And do that in enough series so that as drivers are coming through there, they're going to sense that, oh, something's happened, this, this, this lane is narrower, and to encourage them to slow down. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions or take any direction council would like to give.
Councilmember O'Connell?
You knew I was just ready to jump on this one.
I could feel it.
So you're talking about the little, the yellow paddle things that are similar to what we have for the turning lane to go on to San Bruno Avenue from Bay Shore Boulevard?
Very similar to those, yes.
That are about as ugly as it gets, other than a K-rail and plywood.
You're hurting my engineering feelings, man.
Okay.
Let's repaint them pink.
Not quite, not, can't we make them pink? Yeah, not quite as, uh, ugly as K-rail, but pretty darn close. Um, and, and a lot of them have been taken out over the years.
Oh, they get hit. Yes, they do.
They, they do. They, they get hit and I'm sure then they cause a little bit of damage and a little bit of swearing and people keep going. Um, a lot of these major suggestions, if and when the Bay Shore, Baylands gets developed,
Mm-hmm.
would probably be required that they take or high-speed rail or whoever does whatever out there. Um, they would probably have to do some of the street improvements for the traffic they're going to be generating off-site, wouldn't they?
John, do you want to help me on that? Because I know, I know that, I'm looking at the planning director, because I know that community development and planning have also got a, a, a study on Bay Shore Boulevard that might have some input on this.
As a companion to the Measure J J, um, general plan amendment, there's a requirement that there be kind of a study Randy's talking about along Bay Shore Boulevard. And my expectation as a developer would, obviously, if they're going to generate traffic, and some of that traffic is going to have implications on Bay Shore, that at very least, a fair share financial contribution to, to a solution to the Bay Shore issue. And that would be resolved through the E I R and, you know, maybe development agreement, if we want them to go beyond what their obligation is.
Okay, and, and from what I understand, from looking at prior E I R discussions, and, you know, I guess I shouldn't be quoted on this, because- and, you know, I guess I shouldn't be quoted on this, because it's been a long time since I read it, that while we can force something that's in our jurisdiction that's directly impacted by development in our jurisdiction, we can't force it for another jurisdiction. So right at the Bay Shore, at the Daly City line, we couldn't force a signal there or a signal on Third Street because of traffic, because that's out of our jurisdiction. But if, as long as it's within our jurisdiction and an EIR shows that it's necessary, we would be able to raise that implementation and correction if a traffic demand showed that it was going to be impactful. Is that correct?
So it it's a yes and no on that? It's correct that we can't require it, but certainly the study could reveal that it was a measure that would be recommended. But if the adjoining jurisdiction declines to have it implemented, even if our development would be required to pay for it, then it just becomes an unavoidable issue that we can't correct.
So a no mitigation available kind of problem?
Yes, ma'am.
But if the EIR and the traffic demand studies that go along with some sort of project going somewhere show that it's mitigable, then they should have to do it.
Well, within our jurisdiction, yes, within our jurisdiction, yes.
Over there, so maybe someday down the road a piece, when anything gets built out on the Baylands, they may be required to put in some sort of traffic calming or access because of the increased traffic demands that they're going to create.
I I think you're right, ma'am, and I think the only distinction I would draw here, if I may, is that this really comes down to the the items we're looking at tonight for this long-term proposal for traffic calming, really is more of a policy decision on the council is, are we going to remove capacity on the roadway? Because what the EIR will study is they will look at, well, you've got four lanes of roadway right there right now. What's the, what's the vehicle capacity per lane in there, and how do you manage that? But if we choke it down to two lanes, then it's less throughput.
Well, if we, I mean, I'm trying to vision choking it down to two lanes, you know, on a day-to-day basis, and that's sort of like doubling the amount of traffic. So when an event lets out at Cal Palace and we've got backed-up cars for miles, because not enough cars can get through there. Slowing them down is one thing, and slowing them down with niceness by putting the, you know, I've been in developments in other cities where you drive into an area that's a twenty-five mile-an-hour zone, and you get a smiley face if you're going twenty-five or less, and you get a angry face or a slow-down, red-flashing something if you're going too fast. And and I think that, to a certain degree, enforcing the speed limits with our police can be a deterrent where people know that they're going to get popped. And I know the state of California has just initiated where, at least in major transportation areas, if you're going ten miles over the speed limit, they can give you a ticket without pulling you over. And that might be something we could look into doing, because they're going to be doing that on major highways in major cities. They've got the technology to do that, where you don't even get pulled over, you just get a ticket in the mail for going ten miles over. But anyway, that's my questions for staff at this point.
Councilmember Cunningham?
So when I was having a conversation with Randy, and he first suggested choking the traffic down to one lane in each direction, I went, my initial immediate response was, oh, heck no. Because I imagined what that was going to do to our local traffic. However, since upwards of seventy percent or more of that traffic doesn't start, begin, start, end, or anywhere in between Brisbane, this is traffic that is coming from the south end of San Francisco, where the new Schlegel Lock fifteen-hundred homes is going to go. It's coming off Geneva. It is not, funnily enough, coming off Guadalupe Canyon, which we had the conversation that that was put in to take traffic, but nobody uses it, which is really interesting. And it does, so all of that traffic that's coming down Geneva or coming from the southern end of of San Francisco used to go up to 101 there. It just became convenient to come through Brisbane. And for all of us who've lived here forever, we know, when I first moved here, we didn't even have a stop stop sign at the entrance to town. Now, if you could imagine if there wasn't a traffic light there, what that would be like. So the idea of annoying the traffic enough that doesn't live in Brisbane or is coming to Brisbane, so they, some of them at least might go in a different direction, is an interesting thought I think we should look at. But in the meantime, if you haven't stood down in front of the Mobile Home Park at seven-thirty in the morning and realize that there's seventy-one families who live there with their children trying to get out to go to work and go to school, it is a death wish for each one of them every single day. That traffic is phenomenal, speeds coming through there in the morning. And there are certain places on Bay Shore right now that you are inches away from the traffic hitting you. And so some of these interim things that are ugly as all get out, if it works a little bit, I'm certainly happy to look at it, because to me, it is a safety issue that is of epic proportions for those people who live there or anybody else who's just trying to work work down there. We've got more businesses with people coming and going. I I think we have to look at it somewhere. But the whole thing of annoying traffic so they go away from Brisbane is very interesting to me at this point, how we do that, whether we, where we get the money from to do that. And then, of course, the idea of more traffic lights might be a good idea, too. But this is one of my pet peeves, so I'm all over this one.
And and if I may, ma'am, if you don't mind me making some comments on the top of that is, you know, one of the challenges we have about Bay Shore Boulevard, it was designed as Bay Shore Freeway. And and so that's what it looks like. So it's a relatively straight roadway, it's really wide lanes, and it encourages people to go fast. And the challenge we have when we go out there is, you know, we have to comply with the Engineering and Traffic Survey sections of the Vehicle Code that tell us how we how we set speed limits. And we set speed limits based on the eighty-fifth percentile, which means the speed at which eighty-five percent of the traffic is traveling. And they're traveling at fifty-plus. And and so we're, you're never going to be able to slow that down unless you choke capacity or unless you stop it from being a straight road. So that that's why we've come up with the solutions we have. And I I agree completely with Councilmember O'Connell. In fact, I I noted in the staff report that we've already got those radar signs on. And the ones I saw give you a sign that says "too fast" or "thank you" if you're doing the speed limit. So so we are trying to work with kindness, we are trying to work with delineators, with the visual narrowing. And I do acknowledge that some of these things get hit on occasion. That's unfortunate that drivers are driving at fifty miles an hour in a twelve-foot-wide lane, and they can't control their vehicle to stay within that space. And my personal opinion is it's preferable for them to hit a barrier that's designed to take that impact than it is for them to continue to drift and hit a car or to hit a pedestrian.
There's this road in Europe, could be Germany, you know what I'm talking about?
I'm I'm listening, I didn't know which one you were going to go to.
Okay, there's a road, and it's got ridges in the ground. And there's signage that says, like, if your car is exactly at forty, fifty, whatever it is, the speed at which you're going and the tires, you're going over those ridges makes a song. It's like, it's a really successful implementation. And so people like try, it's fun, and people want to be at the right speed limit, because then, and it's like the distance that they're spaced together.
Right, exactly.
And I think that that's such an interesting thing to consider. I think there's things that other countries do that are so effective and rather inexpensive, and I just don't know why we don't implement them here. But I think that that could be a fun alternative that gets the driver to willingly want to.
Slow down, right, right. I I agree with you, and I think if you were, if we're talking about, thinking about Bay Shore from from a southbound direction, I think you would want to do it a a bit north of the Mobile Home Park, just because, as entertaining as that music would be.
Oh, they might hear it.
Yeah, they'd hear it all night. Because that's the problem, and that's what we've always talked about with speed bumps and with the dots. A lot of people think, oh, just put those ceramic dots out there. The problem with those devices is they work twenty-four-seven.
Yeah.
But they work at three in the morning when you're trying to sleep. And and so you've got to be judicious of where you put them.
I'll have to find it and send it to you.
I'd love to see it, yes, ma'am. I, because I have, I've I've seen that before, where, and I'm familiar with the technology, where you design the spacing so that if you're traveling at the posted speed limit, it's just, it's smooth. But if you're not, it becomes very, very jarring. But I'd love to see how they they got it to follow, you know, a music chart.
Yeah, it's really cool.
Mexico, they put Topes in.
Everywhere, Topes. Demasiado más Topes, I think, sometimes.
Councilmember Lance?
So Randy, so we're going to have these segments. What's the distance of each one approximately?
It'd be within less, just around a mile. It'd be within a mile reach, sir, because I'm really trying to just put it between, say, like where M and K Pipelines is, you're familiar with that business? You're going south.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Them and the end of the Commercial District before San Bruno. So it's just within that short.
Okay, so it would be one long stretch.
No, it wouldn't be a long stretch, it would be, it would be three different segments of it.
And then space, and then section.
Segment, space, a segment, space, yeah, trying to get people, oh, ooh, ah, ooh.
Yeah, yeah, so how long would those sections be?
Each one?
Yeah.
Fifteen to eighteen feet?
Okay.
So just enough to catch your attention for a sec.
Got it, got it. And then, so you're showing white and then the yellow one. So the yellow ones would be on the inside of the road?
Right.
And white would be on that?
Right, we'd match the Vehicle Code. So the Vehicle Code has your center lines as yellow, so the ones on the center line would be that color, and your edge lines are always white, so that's why you would have those two.
Okay, and then you, you said that, I guess, Cal, Caltrans used to own the road, now the city of Brisbane owns the road?
Right, it was a Caltrans road, and they gave it to us in the early sixties after we incorporated. They offered it to us and we took it.
We took it, and so
Oh, man.
Now, since we own it, though, that then allows us this kind of flexibility to do as we please, because El Camino is, right?
That is absolutely the upside. The upside is you can do whatever you want on it. The downside is you have to pay for whatever you do on it.
Sure.
That's.
Yeah, but, you know, reducing it to one lane each way, that's, you know, that's something that we choose to do as a community. Because we own the road, we can do it.
Absolutely.
And Caltrans can't say sorry.
Don't need anybody's permission, I just, I just need your permission to do that.
Okay. And then the 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 little sign that says, you know, you're going too fast or whatever. So is this going to be words, no, no smiley faces or angry faces?
Just a thank you, just a thank you.
Okay.
I, I, you know, I've seen the both, they're both kind of effective, people sometimes.
I like the angry face, though.
I think an angry face would be funny.
Yeah, I'll see if I can program the one we've ordered for angry faces.
You can program an angry face.
We'll see if we can do that.
Thank you.
I think we should just do like, like, police radar in use. That would get me to slow down.
I'm happy with those signs, yeah, sure.
Good revenue.
But we've, but we've done that. You you recall, the police have done that before, they put out there what they call ghost cars. Right, they'll, they'll park a patrol car that doesn't have anybody in it, and that sometimes slows people down.
The empty car trick.
Yeah, sometimes it does. Although, I mean, I think you you've seen the vehicle I drive around, you know, the OES vehicle, which looks very much like it's a law enforcement vehicle. And people will pass me doing forty-five and a twenty-five on it, just like, oh, oh. I think not all drivers are very aware to what's going on sometimes.
Unfortunately.
Okay, Councilmember Mackin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Randy, a lot of what you gave us in the staff report is based upon the Berkeley Bay Shore Complete Street Safety Assessment.
Correct.
Which I had asked you for, and I read through the whole thing. And what's interesting in there, I think notable, is it it's pretty serious what we're talking about, because in the past ten years, there's been eight pedestrian crashes and twelve bicycle crashes, one fatal injury and three severe injuries. And I take that pretty seriously, I hope everybody does. So the channelizers, I don't know if you call them channelizers, or you've got different names for them. And we can debate the merits of whether they're ugly or beautiful. Is it a short-term fix as such? I I even looked up the cost, the channelizers aren't cheap, they're about forty bucks a piece. So it's it's not chump change when you start counting how many.
Yeah, and they're about triple that when you, because we, that's just the price for the curb, I think, man, the curb, the delineator, it's the bolts that come with it, yeah. No, yeah, it's not, that's why it's, that's why I think it's that and with the signs is twenty-five. I'm sorry for interrupting you.
No, 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 that's okay. So thinking this through, and a lot of the other information that came from the SafeTrack plan, they made all kinds of other suggestions. I hate to bring up the impact fees, which we just got done, but theoretically, either by our TDM ordinance or impact fees on traffic, we could potentially implement more of these physical alterations to infrastructure at a later date. But so we're looking for something to do immediately and capture some means to solve the problem. So if we characterize the problem as unsafe speed, which I think it should catch anyone's attention, about the observations, the report from our police department about traffic being even greater on the weekend peak periods, sixty-five, seventy miles an hour, Commander Garcia, is that correct?
That is a possibility, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty high, and and I've seen it. So we've all said, oh, I think they're going seventy. Well, thank you, you've you've proven my point. But something else was mentioned one time several months ago, Randy, so I'm going to ask you to dust off the gray matter.
Okay.
We have six intersections, San Bruno, Van Waters, Old County, Valley Drive, Guadalupe, and Industrial Way. You know where I'm headed?
I think so, but go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, you mentioned this, because you brought up once to the Planning Subcommittee about narrowing down to one lane, and of course, we're all horrified every time we hear that. And and anyone I've mentioned it to goes, oh, my God, it's going to be horrible. And I brought up to someone else also, well, the Cal Palace lets out and it's going to be a nightmare. However, one thing you brought up, and it resonated with me, is setting traffic lights. One only needs to head south to South City to see the lights. You will get snagged at every light, and guess what? They don't have an excessive speed problem. So is it not possible that we could also address this, not using all of these intersections? Or we could try it with timing of traffic lights? So that it's impossible to go north from the flyover all the way to Geneva or the San Francisco city limits at sixty miles an hour without stopping? Because I think you probably could today.
You could, and that that brings up a fascinating case study, I I think, as you do that. And it really comes down to, you know, ma'am, I've been talking about speeds on Bay Shore Boulevard, I think, since I came to work here in two thousand and one, because it really comes down to how does the community see the adjoining land uses? And what sort of traffic volumes and speeds are consistent with those land uses? Because as we, as we've talked about here, it was designed as a freeway, it was the Bay Shore Freeway. That's what it did. It was a Bay Shore, now it's kind of become the Bay Shore Audubon in some cases, inappropriate speeds for the existing land uses. But the challenges you end up sometimes with using the timing of the lights is very similar to the challenges you end up sometimes when you put in what the average driver perceives to be as an unnecessary amount of speed sign. Because what they do then is they try and beat the light.
Sure.
So sometimes it works against you, but that is something that we could certainly try, because it's easy to fix. If it's not working, you just flip the switch and turn the programs back to the way they were. But we could certainly take, you know, at least three of those intersections and time them so that they force drivers to stop. But all of these major changes that we've talked about, I I don't think. But all of these major changes that we've talked about, I don't think that the use of the delineators are gonna have a major impact on your citizens, other than hopefully them slowing down along with everybody else. But we just have to understand that if we do these other things for a period of about six months, it's gonna be inconvenient for all drivers of the road, including your residents, people whose destinations and origins are here, right? And we just have to be aware of that. And we've gotta decide, are we willing to do that, is the council willing to do that as a policy, to try and slow down the speeds, particularly in this target area that we've been addressing?
But, but working with the timing on the lights is something we can try. We can try different intersections, so we have a case study to see what the effect is. And as for the Cow Palace and that letting out, great point to bring up. Can we not coordinate with the Cow Palace, as you see in many cities, where you have an officer standing there and he's actually activating the traffic light? If they told us in advance, this is a big event, it's gonna let out at four o'clock, you know, we wanna try to get as much traffic out of here. Can we do that? Do we have the capacity to do that?
I won't speak for Commander Garcia, but I think certainly to do that, you might have to bring a couple of officers in on duty to stand there and manually activate the signals, but that is feasible.
Okay, and then final question, of the six intersections, there is no traffic light at San Bruno, Southern End of San Bruno.
Correct, there's none.
And you've put up the Mast Pole, I can't remember if that's what it's called. And apparently, one of the reasons we don't have a light, please confirm for me, is cost, is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so, but that could also be a future to be put in there, which would help on both northbound and southbound for that area, especially near the Mobile Home Park.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Which is really the scariest part of all, and we have children and people on bikes, and they're taking their lives in their hands.
I agree with you a hundred percent. If we had a traffic signal in San Bruno, you could just control that, the timing of that traffic signal and the signal at the former Van Water Rogers Road, and that would, you could really reduce those speeds in there.
Any possibility that we can look for a grant? Or as this report from Berkeley says, if we had a, I can't remember what they called it, a safety plan for Bay Shore, that it gives us a greater chance to secure a grant? And that safety plan sounds like consultant and a whole lot of money, but absent that, is there a way we can just try to apply for a traffic light?
We do that actively, ma'am, we work with Renting Public Policy Group, and we've had a number of places where you try to get through. The problem is, as horrific as it is to have had deaths out there and to have had serious accidents out there, we're not nearly as bad as so many other places are that have had so many more accidents. So we just end up at the bottom of the priority barrel, and we don't get funded. And so to put a traffic signal in there, call it three quarters to a million dollars, but we did put the mast arm in, and we intentionally put the mast arm in in a place so that it'll accommodate a future traffic signal. But it's just a matter of coming up with, you know, six zeros.
Just something for staff to know, I spoke with the TA, and they are funding projects all the way through the county that are within the one-mile corridor of one-on-one that focus on like some kind of multimodal travel. So they're going to be at the, at an upcoming.
Farmer's Market.
Farmer's Market.
Right, right. So it's a three-regional approach, it's the US one-on-one multi-corridor mobility program that they're doing, they're turing and leveraging off something that Caltrans had done. And their perspective is they are looking at US one-on-one, and they're calling it multimodal, because as you noted very correctly, they wanna go perpendicular to one-on-one for a mile, because they're trying to understand who else is using it and what other means are they using? They're trying to get bicycles and pedestrians and e-scooters, they're trying to find barriers that one-on-one itself may pause. They just kicked off the north region of it, I think, two weeks ago, I participated in it. But what they're gonna do is they're gonna come up, after doing all this public outreach, and with the outreach to staffs, they're gonna come up with a whole list of projects, and then they're gonna come up and try and prioritize it, so, so thank you for bringing that up.
I would say that this, some type of solution on Bay Shore really aligns with the types of projects they're looking for. They told me point blank that they want to equitably spend the money, and they would like to spend money in Brisbane. So I think that if we can, like, Bay Shore, as you said, it's the freeway alternative. So they're talking about how can they get people to use other roadways or roadways that could accommodate bikes, scooters, that sort of thing? So that this might be a way that we could get funding, you know, to put sidewalks all the way to the bus station, for example, from the Mobile Home Park, which has been a real big safety issue, but that encourages, they're talking biking, walking, scooters, carpools, all of that stuff. So I think at least, like, maybe they'd be able to put in, like, give us money for a sidewalk, because that takes to the bus route. And then those people who are from the trailer park or businesses there on Bay Shore, they have a safe way for people to get here via bus. And then, you know, if we could put in like some bike infrastructure, that is something that I know we've gotten several emails about from people saying that one of the most dangerous places for them to bike is Brisbane, because I guess we don't have like enough bike lanes or signage or what have you. So we might be able to like take some of these ideas and get funding from there, because this roadway is so, it really meets the criteria, I think, from what the TA is looking for.
I'd love to talk with you offline, ma'am, to find the name of the person the TA said, I just don't wanna out their name in public, so.
Oh, I got two.
I would love to, I'd love to have that, I'd love to see that.
Actually, you know, truthfully, I said, maybe it's good for you to come to a council meeting, and they said that they would be open to coming to the next council meeting. And they're trying to get, you know, information directly from citizens. But I think that, you know, citizens may not have, they might, the ideas that citizens put forth are likely gonna be more interior to Brisbane versus on Bay Shore, which I think is really what falls in line with the parameters. So if we have space on the next agenda, we might be able to all talk to the TA together.
So Madam Mayor, I still had a question for Randy, if I could, please.
Okay.
So you are asking for direction, and these channelizers, I'm sorry if I'm still using separators. Could you give us some idea, do we have money to do those? Is this something that you would be planning ahead or trying to get a grant? Because again, if we're trying to get money, that's the one thing this SafeTrack study says, if you're gonna try to get money, build a whole picture with it, sidewalks, bike lanes, traffic lights, all of that. And one other thing I would just point out, for everyone, I had a lot of people when I talked to about this also said, oh my God, it's gonna slow me down trying to get home, and that's a terrible thing. Well, I think in the future, for Brisbane's fiscal health, we're going to need retail along Bay Shore. We're going to want to capture some of that, including from businesses, people working out at Sierra Point, and slowing those cars down from sixty-five may benefit us in the long run a lot of ways that we haven't thought about.
So I will tell you that we can find twenty-five thousand dollars. And really, what I'm looking for, for guidance, is if the council agrees it's a good idea to put these delineators, these separators, these visions of road narrowing out there, we'll get it done within a month or so.
It's temporary, right? So if we do it and it's a horrible disaster, then we can take it out.
They go in with three bolts, and if you don't like them, we can just yank them out, sure.
So I do wanna acknowledge that we have a hand raised that's been raised for a while, and so I do wanna move on to public comment and allow Erin a chance to speak.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, first I'm gonna apologize, I had no intention of making a comment tonight. But I thought it's worth mentioning that my morning commute, and I have that every day, I leave down San Bruno and I get on Bay Shore, and then I am in the same timing as the trucks from the Cracker Park Event Rentals and Distribution Companies and the folks that service the SFO Catering. I have no problem with that, I just wanna make sure that whatever we do on Bay Shore doesn't move those big trucks onto San Bruno and right past Brisbane Elementary School. So I don't have an answer to this problem, I really appreciate that you guys are looking at it. I just wanna make sure that we don't have any unintended consequences of moving big businesses into the city. And one thing that I've been thinking about, which might not be the right answer, is lengthening the left turn arrow to get from Bay Shore onto Tunnel to move those trucks onto one-on-one sooner rather than later. But I don't know what the answer is, I appreciate your time, thank you, that's the end of my comment.
Staff was shaking their heads, so do you have a response?
I mean, I was just shaking my head in the sense that I don't see a scenario, and I wasn't trying to be disrespectful to the speaker.
No, no, I know.
I just don't see a scenario where trucks coming out of Cracker Park would preferentially choose to go up San Bruno Avenue with its multiple stop signs and the steep and the very tight turns we have coming down the backside. So I appreciate the concern, but I don't see that happening.
Yeah, it gets pretty, pretty narrow on San Bruno. Okay, anyone else wishing to make a public comment at this time?
Can I make a public comment?
Sure.
Since there's nobody else. I just got an email from MTC that's doing a webinar study to make all of our freeways toll roads.
Wow.
And they're having a webinar on November seventh and on November eighth, both on Zoom, open to the public. And what they wanna do is make all the freeways toll roads and make designated carpool lanes type thing, but make the whole freeway that way. So you'll pay to drive on the freeway, which would certainly put everything back over on Bay Shore.
It wouldn't make it free anymore.
Pardon?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't make it free anymore, right?
It wouldn't, they're still calling them, they're calling it faster freeways, exploring the potential of pricing.
Well, we'll lose the rest of our restaurant workers.
Freeways for rich people, that's the slogan.
We'll lose the rest of our school teachers, we'll lose the rest of our firefighters, we'll lose the rest of our restaurant workers.
God, okay. Let's move on to council discussion.
And how much they can gain by charging people.
Who would like to go first? Someone wanna make a motion, or we wanna have discussion?
Of, oh, this?
Yes.
So, so Randy thinks we have the money to put some traffic calming devices in. And I think that what I've heard from a couple people here at least, is that we wanna try to slow down traffic. And we can do that, we can't put a lower speed limit in, because the state won't allow us to, because everybody's going seventy, so we can't say they can only go forty. So, I mean, if we have the money, and it's a temporary gig, that if it doesn't work and we can try light timing and those kind of things in conjunction, if that's the council's direction, I'll go along with it.
I'm concerned with a one-lane deal.
I think right now I'm just looking for direction on the temporary delineators, the visual narrowing, ma'am.
Yeah, we're still gonna have two lanes.
I think that's fine, I would say anything beyond that, I'm hesitant.
Even traffic lights?
Traffic lights, I would, I would say traffic lights is my number one priority. Listen, I think you can't fix bad actors, like, there's no perfect road, right? People are gonna speed no matter what the speed limit is, people are gonna run lights no matter what the situation is. So yes, we've had a certain amount of crashes, a certain amount of deaths, all of that's unfortunate, but roads aren't immune to that. That's what happens when you drive. And so I think that we could do everything possible to try to make this as safe as possible, and we will still have those outcomes, and we have to acknowledge that that's just kind of part of what happens. So I don't know how much, we could try to fix this, the problem a little bit more, but I don't think that we're just going to end car accidents or people speeding on Bay Shore.
But you know, the question here is, though, is do we wanna move forward with the separators?
I do.
And I think that's fine.
And the traffic lights. And the traffic lights.
Well, the traffic, the timing of the traffic lights, but not the installation of them.
Okay.
Timing, timing is fine. So is there a motion on the floor, then?
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay, you guys are in cahoots tonight.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Item H, city managers report on upcoming activities.
Move through the end of that very quickly, so I'm a couple minutes behind you. Fourth item, first one is just a reminder that we will be doing the Visitation Avenue paving project in November. There could be some disruption from that project, there's three phases to it. One is grinding of existing pavement and full-depth asphalt repair for the pothole areas. The second is repaving with new asphalt, and the third is striping. Each one of those could take four to five days, and there is actually two sections to this project. So this could go on for several weeks, so just to be aware of that, we will.
On what street?
Visitation.
Okay.
Yeah, and we will be getting this information out to the public as best we can to try to make sure people know what's happening. The Lions Pumpkin Patch Program is this weekend, the community park, nine AM to one PM, with a fun run and barbecue, with registration for, at the park, starting at nine AM. If you're not able to go to the Lions Pumpkin Patch, we do have pumpkins available at the community pool at Cost to Solano. And finally, the Restoration for the Brisbane Police Department's Annual Holiday Food and Toy Distribution opens on Monday, October twenty-third. See our social media sites for more information, we'll have some information on, in the blast, either tomorrow or Wednesday, or both, and that's it.
Moving to item I, county-wide assignments and subcommittee reports, we had a report from Angel that there was nothing to report out in the time period as far as city subcommittee reports go. Does anyone have any county meetings they'd like to report on?
All mine got canceled.
Nice.
I had a CCAG meeting wherein the vote was to approve the extension of the Fast Lane North. And when I got in the car to drive home, there were already about a hundred vehicles working on that project twenty minutes later. That's all I'm gonna say on that.
Okay, great, moving on, we're in communications.
Communication was received from Lisa Greenlee, Frank Kern, and Michelle Salmon.
Excellent, oral communications number two, anyone wishing to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at nine nineteen PM.